We call a regular board meeting to give me buck schools ISD 701 to order. It's December 10th, 2025 by the fourth of January Central Standard Time. With that, I'd like to welcome everyone here. The head item to the pledge allegiance to the standard wish.
The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, my nation under God, and it is well with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. With that, we move to the right. Do you have any public commentary?
We have no public commentary, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. With that, we'll move to the more presentation of Sterling Company fiscal year 2025 audit.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I think I'll turn it over to our business manager, Alex. Bonnie, maybe talk a little bit about the process if that's okay, Mr. Chair.
Of course. As long as this doesn't come along in the room again.
Just pass it. See if you want to.
Oh, I can. I'll go ahead. I can do it.
Yeah, so Mrs. Bonnie Sterling is here with Sterling Company. They've been working on our fiscal year ended June 30th audit since September and working very hard. It's a big job and Bonnie's here to give us kind of a high level overview of the results. Before you have statements, management letter and all the details and we can definitely look at any of those things. But I think you're going to keep it high level and take questions as they come. So the floor is yours.
Thank you.
Bonnie, before you start, maybe if you move to Ms. Go out to see. I'll make a pick up and they'll help with each other from here.
Thank you, members of the board. My name is Bonnie. I'm one of the partners with Sterling Company who did conduct the audit. As Alex had mentioned, we're usually on site beginning in September sometime. And actually just kind of finished up literally the reports getting in yesterday. So I did pull together a set of slides. You have an 80-page book in front of you and two correspondence. And I'm trying to pull out some information in the slides that maybe we can work through. But by all means, if you have questions when we're going, please stop the light. Stop me on this way. So if you look first, the 80-page report, I usually bring the table of contents because this report has a lot of information in it. We're going to talk about an independent auditors report. We're going to talk about RSI, management's discussion and analysis. There's basic financial statements in here, which include both the district wide and a fund-based statement under UFRS and then footnotes. There's additional required supplemental information regarding OPEV and net pension liabilities. More supplemental information, UFRS compliance reports, single audit and then management's available. So there's a lot in that report. So on the next slide, the independent auditors report requests to present that the district received an unmodified or clean audit report. And what that means, in our opinion, the financial statements present fairly in all material respects. The financial position of the district as of June 30th of 2025, your fiscal year end, in accordance with generally accepted accounting practices. The next RSI required supplemental information is your management discussion and analysis. And in the boundary report, that can be found on pages four through 16. And there that's management's ability or opportunity to discuss to the board and to the citizens in a narrative form, what was the financial condition of the district? And it's in the one spot in the report where you show comparative to the prior year. A couple of points that the district did highlight in their financial was there was a net loss to the district in students. Obviously, that impacts financial ramifications. There were increased costs overall in all your educational costs, particularly in special education because of adding new staff. And then in increased costs in salaries and benefits. Interesting enough, when you look at salaries and benefits in one of the subsequent slides, we're going to see that salaries and benefits make up about 72% of the district's total expenditure cost in the general fund. And you did experience a $1.5 million increase in those salaries and benefits between the two fiscal years. On the next slide, the next couple of slides, we're going to be talking about the district as a whole. Those can be found on pages 17 and 18 in your financial report. This is where the district reports the financial position on the full accrual. So if you were in a commercial setting, that shows all your liabilities and all your assets. So you can see on the full accrual that district has an acquisition of $15 million deficit. This includes capital assets of $44 million. Now that's at historical cost, not at fair value. It includes your bonded debt of $19 million. OPEV obligations, that's your other post-employment benefits of $33 million. An additional pension obligations under TRAP are $16.7 million. The OPEV obligations and the pension obligations are actuarially determined. And your pension obligation is your proportionate share between TRA and PRA. So that's this amount that goes to this district. Now, the net position that we talked about with the deficit of $15 million is actually made up of three parts. Again, we're on the full accrual method where we look at your investment in capital assets net of all your debt. This $24.7 million, you have restricted under state funding of 10.6, which means that the funding is received from the state, but you can't spend it except for specific restricted areas. And your unrestricted was a deficit of $15 million, all $51 million. If you go to the next slide, you'll see that that unrestricted increased another $1.5 billion for the year. That gives you a snapshot of the district as a whole. Again, that snapshot brings in all of those liabilities and brings in your OPEV. It brings in your net pension liability, brings in assets at historical cost. So it's really not meant to be an operating type of reporting, but just to give you a bird's eye view of what's out there for your liabilities. The next section we're going to talk about is really the fund-based statements. And that's under UFRS. These are the statements that are based on what you see on a day-to-day operational level. We're going to spend a little bit of time on the general fund. As you can see, the general fund revenues. And if you want to follow along in the actual on report, that can be found on page 21. Your revenues for fiscal year 25 in the general fund were just shy of $41 million. The detail on that, it's not in the slide. Some years I brought pie charts and I break out what your total revenues are. Just to give you an idea of that $41 million, the majority of that comes from, almost 76% of that comes from federal and state funding sources. About 6.2% of it comes to be about, or $2.5 million for your general fund came from a local tax levy. And the rest of that is made up of county and tax dollars that come in. So of that $41 million in revenues, it's important to note that 70%, 76%, 76% come from federal and state funding. Now, your expenditures for FY '25 in your general fund were $43.6 million. Again, in page 21, it kind of give you a split. But just to give an idea of that, the majority of that, $43 million in expenditures is salary and benefits. That's $31.5 million in your general fund alone. So that's 72% of your budget is salary and benefits. So you can see there was another financing source of $42,000. That was selling of the equipment that the district had. But overall, that left in net change in your general fund for FY '25 of $2.6 million deficit. Just want you to kind of look at that for a minute. And then I put for comparative purposes your FY '24 net change in your general fund was $2.3 million deficit. If you go to the next slide, you can see what I did was put together comparative table between where you stood at. And again, these are your general fund net positions. This is what's left over at the end of FY '25 that impacts what's happening now in FY '26. Comparative between the two, non-spendable back from FY '24, we had $51,000 for just a prepaid. That was done. That wasn't the case for this year. Restricted, you can see the difference in the restricted. Again, those are restricted by federal or state mandates. When they give you certain funding, you track them in UFRS with a fin code. I'm pretty familiar with fin codes. What to expend on it, if it hasn't been expended, it gets restricted. Those are only available for those specific programming areas. Committed, committed means that those are the dollars that this board several years ago did a resolution to commit funds for your other post-employment benefits. The increase in that committed was about, was $200,000, a little over $200,000, which was the investment earnings. There was another motion that was made by the board, well, three to four years ago, that said any earnings on those committed funds would also be committed. So of your fund balance, we've got 4.1, all 4.2 that's committed or OPEV. Now, committed means that it's under board commitment. There isn't a federal or a state restriction. Assigned, that difference of that assigned of $131,000. The district has what we call Fund 31. It's generally set aside for some activities in your athletic department, drama, those type of things. So that has an assigned balance of $131, which means if we look at your total fund balance, the previous screen showed where you ended up. This shows you've got a deficit of an unassigned of $1.7 million under GASB. If you go to the next slide, you can see that above that $1.79, part of that is your UFRS unassigned of $20,423. That's really what you have for operational purposes was $20,000. There is a deficit that's allowed under UFRS for safe schools and your LTFM funding. Those are both in the deficit. UFRS allows that the state funding allows you to go into the deficit for future funding sources. But for GASB presentation, we have to net those two together because the district hasn't done that yet. So that brings us to that deficit of $1.7 million. So there's a distinction between if you're looking at that unassigned under UFRS versus what the GASB presentation is, you need to factor in those two unallowed deficits or allowed deficits, I should say. Any questions on that part? Otherwise, the next slide will kind of show what I did was go back since COVID, the last, you know, five years since COVID to say, where did your general fund, this is general fund now, start out at back in fiscal year 2021, it was at $6.9 million. And now you can see for 2025, we ended up at the deficit of $1.7. That's a net change of $8.6 million over the last five years. So I know with some of these slides that I did, you know, hammering on the general fund, I think just the important way is it was a tough year. It continued to be a tough year. The trend was towards what you saw the year before. We talked about since COVID, you know, there was a loss of federal funding that had come through in those years after COVID. There was, when it first came through, there was about $2 million that was coming through the health funding. That's done. And interesting enough, I was reading an article that said after COVID came, you know, year five, it's going to be where a lot of these entities were going to feel that hit and you're right into that target. So you can see there was a net change of $8.6 million under the last five years. So the reason why I bring that highlight is because that just shows this is what you're carrying over into FY '26, you know, and future years. So there isn't that available push in that you saw, you know, by six years ago. Any questions on the general fund? Again, a lot of times we get into other things. I just really felt like at this point, the important thing was to look at where you had ended up with that fund balance. Questions on that part?
Bonnie, are you going to talk about this later, about SOD?
I, if we want to address a general specific question about.
No, I just think it's important for board, for us to understand the calculation, how close we are, what city has, what it means.
So I can address that here with it. Right now, the district is not in SOD for FY '24, '25. SOD means statutory operating debt. The state has a calculation that goes through depending on where your expenditures are. Once you go into an SOD situation, the state requires specific course actions to do. You are not in SOD, even though you're showing a deficit of $1,729,000, because if you go to this slide, and I think it was maybe the one prior, let's see, that one. The only thing that's keeping you out of SOD, the majority thing, is the committed on the 4 million. So right now, they, the state will factor in a committed. So if you look at those fund balance criteria there, there's six components that make up your fund balance. And I've talked to the board before, you kind of look at it as an onion, kind of an onion. You start looking at peeling away the layers of that onion. You know, non-spendable is that first layer that comes off. Then we look at restricted because that can't be spent, the committed. So what the state does is they just lift up those first two layers, those bottom three layers. The state will still say, hey, those potentially will keep you out of SOD.
For the sake of the people watching it on TV and who are here, tell them what happens if you do go to statutory operating debt.
At that point, you're identified and then you need, there's paperwork and a plan that needs to be followed by the state. They carefully monitor you, making sure you're following those procedures and working to get out of SOD.
Otherwise, they will take over.
Otherwise, they.
Thank you.
Yes, otherwise they do. So keep in mind, that's that committed balance there is what's keeping you out of SOD. The other thing is that committed balance of 4.1 million, you know, that was really put in when you were trying to address your OPEV liability. And your OPEV liability is $33 million. The OPEV liability is actuarially determined based on what are your commitments to your current employees and your retirees. And so they determine that's about $33 million. That if you, you know, that is the commitment at that point. At that point, at $4 million, you're about 12% funded. There is no mandate to fund the OPEV. It's just something that the board had done to try to be fiscally responsible and address that liability. But with that into, into the situation, the state will, if you look at their calculations on the compliance report, that tells that there's a little SOD calculation on the bottom of that report when we submitted into MDEs on the MDE site. They're factoring in the committed.
Is that OPEV liability trending down at some point?
It is slightly, but it really, I think it was maybe $34 million versus $35 million. Actually, there's in the boundary report, you can see the trending of your OPEV on page 50. So it started out, it's been sitting at about, it started out back in 2018. Your net liability was about $36 million. It went up to a high of $41 million back in FY '22, but now it's about $32. So it, it can fluctuate based on contract negotiations, commitments, census data. You know, they take into consideration, you know, the number of retirees, the plan provisions, certain, you know, demographic and economic assumptions. So page 50 will give you that trend history where that whole could extend.
You could also pay as you go, like we did before. We want to be more fiscal years.
So you are doing pay as you go right now. That is what required. So pay as you go means that you're funding your retirees with the current, you pay the insurance premiums with the.
You're in here.
Right. And actuarially, that's about two point, again, on page 50. And that equates up fairly close to what you saw in your UFRS recording. You know, it's generally 2.2 million, over $2 million that you're funding under pay as you go for that OPEV liability.
Thank you.
Any other questions on the general fund? We're going to just have a couple of slides on some other funds that you have and then we'll open it up for any other questions that you have, might have. So the district besides the general fund. And for this presentation, your general fund means the general fund, your transportation and your capital. So just keep in mind that's Fund 1, 3 and 5 are for these purposes under MDE standards considered a general fund. You also have a debt service fund. Now, I did discover that that fund balance all restricted. That's the type, that is the balance that was remaining as of FY '24. I just need you to update if you have copies of the slides or you can look in your, in your financial reports, page 24, 19 again. And you can see the actual fund balance for the debt service at the end of FY '25 was $8.4 million. So that is made up of restricted cash and investments of $7.8. And that's an important thing to note because the district has a 2020 bond issue that has a one-time payment on January 1, 2026 now of $7.5 million. So over the years, the district has been required to put those funds aside specifically in your debt service. And so you do have those funds sitting there and they have been restricted to meet that payment that is due on January 1st. There is a footnote in footnote five in your financial statements that further go on to show what are those debt service payments that the district has to incur in the next five years and then five years afterwards after that. So you'll see for FY '26, obviously it's quite high because of this $1.75 million one-time payment. Then after that, you'll have the remaining debt service payments paid to them. So that fund is restricted and is not available for any other operations. We levy for your debt service and it's very specifically tied to that. So again, I apologize, but the end of the year fund balance for the restricted debt, the $7.5 is your FY '24. Your FY '25 should be at $8,398.47. That was just a typo on that slide. You also have a food service fund, the district's food service fund you can see. And again, you can go there, the page, the detail for that is to be found further back on pages 58, 57 and 58. But the food service took in about $1.8 billion and the majority of that in the last couple is federal and state, as you're aware, with the change in the state free lunch programs. You do have some local fees that come in from staff or if somebody has a second lunch, they have to pay for that. Your expenditures were $1.8, so there's a net change of $6,750. Now, that fund balance has $548,000. That one is all restricted. Couple of points we've talked about in the last few years, I think, over and over, kind of looking at, there is some receivable sitting in that fund of $77,000. Those are unpaid lunch fees. What happens with those, the district has gone through, they've made some strides determining or doing some collections. Ultimately, the district needs to determine if you exhausted all of your methods to get them, turned it over to collection and it's just not going to happen. The district would need to do a formal recognition to write those off. But that can come from your fund too, fund balance, even though you have a positive fund balance there. That would need to come from a big transfer from your general fund. So that is something based on where those have been sitting and particularly because it's, you know, the free lunch programs that are in place right now would, should be one of the things that the district looks at very closely now in FY '26 to make that decision, whether you exhaust all methods or if there will be an ensuing formal write-off.
So I feel like this is something, I know at least since I've been on the board, that has been on here. I mean, and I know that the comment was made that we're allowed to keep a balance on there. So in one hand, we're saying we can keep it on there. The other hand, you're saying you need to figure out a plan and write it off or do something. So I don't know. That's like two opposites. So what do you do there?
So what UFRS allows you to do is you can certainly leave them on there and determine that you're making every effort to collect it. But ultimately.
I think we know we're not going to get it.
If you're not going to get it at that point, then they really are to that determination from an accounting and GASB standard, they should be written off. But just to be aware that when it does, it requires formal board action and that write-off comes from the general fund.
Well, that $77,000 wasn't just the last year, though, was it? This is probably over several years.
Right. And so that's why we're really seeing at this point, you know, again, 2020, we saw a lot of things happening in that year with COVID. And then it started increasing, but then the likelihood now when free and reduced comes through, there's less likelihood you're going to do it. I know INAC has been working to do the collection part and provided the district with an aged listing. And really, when you look at that aged listing, it's a lot of little dollars, maybe a few handful of more significant ones. And so it's, but it is an accumulation from.
Years.
Years, right. It's not just, that just, that wasn't just FY '25's activity. That's the accumulation of it. I did put in, there's $26,000, that's the flip side, which means, you know, people, the families have funds on account. And so INAC tracks that. So if a family pays and they have funds on account, that was $26,390 at the end, you know. Those are just, you know, if families move out, you're required to send those out and INAC follows up with all of that. So food service, I think, you know, overall, the other thing is you look at, you're kind of right on that balance. When I looked at the calculation, I talked to Alex, you're okay with the fund balances. Ironically, the state doesn't allow you to have too high of a fund balance in your food service. They have it required. There's a one-time adjustment that you can have five months of operating. Otherwise, it's recommended for three months of operations. So that's something to look at. I know you had some, I think there were new tables purchased in the food service fund, some of those type of things. We've, you know, talked to the district that they're used just as a leave for food service and it involves kitchen equipment. And those can go to Fund 2 and be utilized against your fund balance. Any questions on the food service? And the last fund that the district has is your community service. Now, the community service fund at total revenues of $778,000 coming in for FY '25, expenditures of $758,000. So there was a positive net change of $19,000. It still does have a deficit fund balance. And there was some inter-fund borrowing, which means that fund for cash flow purposes was $238,000. The cash wasn't there, so it borrows temporarily from another fund. I know in the past, you know, a lot of things with this community service, your early childhood centers in there. So the hopes is that you can spend, but you can see some of those trends going with that fund to help offset that deficit fund balance that's sitting there. You can see there's restricted of $686,000. That's specifically restricted for school readiness. And there's some, I think it's school readiness, the unassigned in there really is coming from that early childhood center.
Bonnie, can I, if I could add something to the table? No, we have.
Now that we have, starting to get some BPK funding, that should help this fund balance improve.
Right, but as we talked about, one of the things with that BPK is that it also, that, that funding source MDE had sent out that memo saying that that doesn't go into fund 4, that those are over in the general fund, fund 1, so you need to track those specifically. And so that was one of the things, when we talked about it during the audit period, the salary costs were over there. The state had given a specific FIN code for those. They're good. Anytime the state puts out any funding programs and they give you a FIN code, finance code, which means, boy, then they're tracking. They want to know how you've expended it and the revenue coming in. So you're, just be careful in FY '26 that you're accounting for those in accordance with MDE. And some of that revenue and expenditures goes into your general fund, so watch between those BPK.
In prior years, we were spending all fund 4
Yes.
to cover those costs.
Correct, yes, yeah. It was only with the new program now that started in FY '25, which there were some dollars that there's a receivable book at the end of the year because of the kids being reported in there. So you're correct that eventually, some of that deficit from before was for those primitive programs.
So in theory, and correct me if I'm wrong, but the BPK dollar should go into fund 1 directly for MDE? And we would want expenses equal to that amount in fund 1
Right.
before we start putting expenses into this?
Right, and the district did, you and your FY '25 budget, those were the salary benefits, for those were put into the general fund with that specific program source. One of the things that we've talked about right at, towards the end of the audit process, what there was brought up is like, okay, the revenue source. And so the revenue source, there was a proposed entry to record the recorded revenue receivable that was supposed to come, you know, based on those expenditures in FY '25, but the funding didn't come until FY '26.
When it comes to the inter-fund cash borrowing, you know, what are, what are the rules? What are the terms? I mean, can you, is there a limit to how many funds? Is there a timeframe when it has to be put back into the fund that you borrowed it? What does that look like?
Yeah, so these are considered temporary funding. And what happens is, you know, when they're approving the disbursements coming through, and the board approves the disbursement, and more comes to that fund, really, they're approving that if there isn't cash there, that it's going to be borrowed. Generally, it's going to come from the general fund because the rest of the funds you can't take from the service, you can't take from debt service, comes from the general fund. So they're considered temporary, temporary, which means generally, within one year or less, they're going to be taken care of. If it doesn't occur, then you need to look at, you know, is it a temporary borrowing? You can charge interest back and forth? Or is it something that the fund is never going to get to the point where it can substantially pay that back? And then is there going to be, have to be a one-time transfer? Again, a fund balance transfer from the general fund to cover it. I think in this case, it was truly a temporary thing just because of the funding sources, the timing of when some of that stuff comes in. Bonnie, can I?
Sorry, is there anything I can ask a question?
Yep.
Just to piggyback off of what Kim said, so when you go back to the BPK expenses, you're not, you're saying that not only do they need to be coded to fund 1, but there's a specific BPK code?
Right, and I think I said finance code, but I think in that case, it's a program code.
Okay.
You know, so, yes, sometimes there is a very specific program code that those costs get overturned. There was a, I think Kathy Erickson, Erickson from MDE had sent out a memo, I think I forwarded them to you on that sort of thing, but there is a specific, yeah. You know, generally, finance codes are the ones that are very specifically capped, but every once in a while, we see things like this where they give it a program code. Any questions on that? So I think overall, you know, your community education or your community service fund had a positive change for the year. The trend, you know, the focus with the early childhood center that you're going to see some change coming there. Your food service is self-supporting itself. It's the general fund that I think, you know, that really needs to be addressed. And from what I understand, the conversation's coming, you know, the budget is going to be carefully watched. You're having meetings coming through. That's one of the recommendations in a separate correspondence that you look at how do you keep yourself SOD? Oftentimes, it's setting a very tight budget, monitoring that budget, and not expending over. Particularly, you know, what can be difficult in school, different, school district finance is because funding can come through to the district, federal and state, for a specific program. It's attached to FIN code or it's attached to program code. But that doesn't mean you can utilize it for your other expenditures coming. And so it's really monitored by those other operational costs.
Bonnie, just to point out, this is not reflective of action statement last spring as far as reductions.
Oh, right, right, because this, well, this is reflective through June 30 of 2025. So you wouldn't have had, you know, any reductions, the deficit fund balance that would have come, any reductions you would have done at the tail end of spring of that, you know, it's only, the full effect is going to show up in FY '26.
Yeah.
And I think what makes it hard, right? If you've got general fund expenditures of 43 billion, and I just sit around, but 80% of those roughly are salary benefits, that means only 20% are non-personal. So it's really, I mean, I shouldn't say this only, but that's only just over $8 million that's non-personal. I don't know what that means, but
Well, and that's what, back on that one slide, when I had brought out the expenditures of 43.6 million, that was the point, is that 31.5 million of that, or 72% is salaries and benefits. And, and again, some of your salaries and benefits are funded through specific funding sources. So the state, well, the federal government will provide. So for instance, title, you know, special ed, some of special ed, some of that stuff does have funding sources. There's a lot of expenditures that are not funded. Obviously, so that 31.5 million is 72% of your expenditures. It's salaries and benefits. And again, that's any school district. You know, you're, it's, it's the staff that make it up. You know, you can have, you have your capital, you know, the building cost for your general fund is about 2.9 million, so it's about 7%. For costs of running the building, your debt is about 2%. And just other supplies, purchased contracted services, purchased services, you know, teachers on call, those type of things are quoted as purchase services, make up about 19%. So, you know, the largest part is salaries and benefits.
Bonnie, when you talk about building, the building costs on your reports?
Mm-hmm.
Is it just a total, or is it broken down for us by buildings?
In this report, it's total. You can get, within the district pulling out of UFRS, you can get building codes. Now, part of UFRS structure, it's a 17-digit code. Part of that is by site. And so some of that would, you know, Alex could pull that out. When we're looking at the capital in this report, it's anything that's coded to a 500 object code. So on that UFRS code, the last three digits dictates where these expenditures get parked. In that 500 object code, which interestingly enough is a management letter, we talked about the district point to try to keep that clean, because anything, your capitalization policy is 5,000 or more. And so anything that would go into that would be that. That's the total that's in this report. But part of that UFRS coding has site, so you'd be able to say how much of it was high school, how much of it was Lincoln.
Okay.
A dirty way to find out. We have a lot of state mandated that we don't get money anymore for. We know how much we're putting out for state mandated programs that they don't fund anymore.
You could pull in, out of UFRS or even within MDE's report, everything we've submitted to the, to MDE and even on their website, which agrees to what the district has submitted. Again, I'd probably look at finance codes would be probably the best place to look at what's funded. And then by virtual, if it doesn't have it, then it probably
Comes out with general.
Yeah, because generally, we see federal and state, if it's mandated and it's restricted, generally, not in every case, there's a specific protocol to it. There would be a way, I don't have that information in the report. It would, you know, pull up some information on the UFRS.
It'd just be curious, you know.
But like going forward
It would be upsetting, you know, because
It would be upsetting because it's a lot of money.
It, well, and isn't, isn't, it could be a little bit difficult going forward because I mean, I think like earned, safe, and sick time, right? Like, that's going to cost our district some money. And I feel like that would be coded just in the general fund because people would continue to get paid. We could have sub. So that would not be, unless we could plan for it and code it in there, would not be as easy to pull out, or would it?
And I think maybe when you earn, safe, and sick time, and I think maybe you're referring to the paid leave, that's not going to come into play in FY '26 or it's January now, '26, the first quarter. You actually can build that into the budget or, or would be, because it's based on a rate. So it's not based on usage, it's based on a rate, and it's based on 0.88% of the payroll. So it really is a budgetary item that if it wasn't planned for originally when the FY '26 budget was done, it really could be looked at. Although I'm not sure with the school district, if you've elected to go like you do with the Minnesota unemployment where you're not getting assessed. My understanding is they were going to just assess everybody that straight 0.88. And look and did, have you received correspondence from the state on that point? And did they assess you the 0.88%?
Yes, but I, you know, there's a discussion about always putting that.
Yeah, right, you can, under, under the law, you can, or under the program, you can split up to 0.44% to the employee.
But I guess the part I was talking about is more pool cost. Like, I think we're talking about tax, but you take into consideration all the additional substitutes and the salary associated with that.
Right, right, yeah, those, those additional costs that come because exactly, you're going to have to have the sub come in. And the thing, and I know that was one of the other things that popped up to the audit. We were talking with Alex on teachers on call, which is your program that you use for the sub subbing. And I believe if I remember, and we were looking at that calculation, it was over $500,000 for FY '25 on what the district has, had contracted to help with those subbing onto it. So that's part of that purchase service. So, you know, that's not part of that 30, you know, 31.5 million in sales or in salary benefits. It's, it's an additional purchase services.
Yeah, so like to Mike's point, I mean, unfunded or underfunded mandates, I guess we have to just state what our assumptions are, right? Because if we looked at unfunded mandates or, I don't know, that caused us to do revenue or increased expense, right? We have all the PSCO stuff.
Right.
I mean, we just have to state our assumptions when we're pulling it together.
And I think Alex and I had a conversation when we were on site, because there are some things that, you know, with funding levels too are not known. So for instance, with the unemployment issue that came up a couple of years ago with the, with the PCAs that are out, and then they go out and there's that unemployment that comes during the summer. You know, that first year when it came out, there was some funding available, and everybody took it to match it. And surprisingly, there's still some funding. But, you know, how long is that? It's not a permanent. So again, that can be $200,000 that currently, right now, the district expended it, and there's funding available to help offset that. That might not be the case. I think Alex had said he had talked to somebody at the state, and they reconciled that in December of FY '26, December of 2026 for the prior year. So, you know, there's a lot of those unknowns. But, and $200,000, $300,000 here, and $100,000 there, and another can quickly add up to that 1.5 million that you saw increased in FY '25 alone.
And I think another big area is oftentimes the state, whoever, whoever doesn't factor in the amount of time that goes into having to implement and administer all of these new mandates. Because I think it's a drain on our staff.
Paid family leave, definitely. And then the, the real unknown with paid family leave, we could, we could do a revised budget and make an adjustment, make an assumption of what it is. But we, the sub-cost that Kim was talking about, I mean, I, I think it, it doesn't even begin until January 1, and I think I have seven applications that I'm looking at right now. They have to start first week in January. So that's seven long-term subs potentially, if they're over 30 days or over, you know, whatever the threshold is to get there. And then we pay a higher rate for a long-term sub than we just do for a daily sub. So it's, it's going to add up very quickly, and it's
Could take like a three-year average or something as a, some guideline, at least, or five-year, two-year?
I hate to say, but at the end of, by the end of the school year, we'll have a pretty good idea of what a semester of cost looks like yes or no next year, so we can double that. But again, it's really an unknown, and it just, you know, more people are having babies. We might have 10 babies, you know, staff members in the district that are having babies this year, and make sure we don't have any. So it's, it's, it would be tough. But I think you're going to have to put an assumed number in the budget plan, because otherwise, it'll be a surprise every time one of them are reconciled.
Because under the plan, you know, part of that is, you know, the state would fund a, you know, a certain percentage, but then the individual could draw off of if there was any, you know, sick leave or other, you know, vacation time. So you've got the district, when we came out, plus then the sub-cost for that issue. And I know under the commercial setting, I was reading under the program, there were some minor grants that commercial entities could apply for, you know, up to $6,000. It was pretty minor to help offset. So I think the state had acknowledged that the cost for this program was far beyond just the tax that's assessed. But it, it will be interesting to see again what that can be.
And I just think about the cost, right? If you had $500,000 in, in teachers on call, and you have seven applications for the beginning of the year.
Roughly, yep, yep.
I mean, what does that do to our total cost and to potentially, I mean, lose teacher, permanent, having to cut permanent teachers to fund this substitute and disruption to the learning?
I think a lot of it's a tail end. And there was a comment in the management letter too, and looking at, especially in this particular situation, the importance of, you know, looking at what that budget is. And oftentimes, you know, meeting quarterly, and when those changes come through, it's like, boy, we have this coming through. Now, we're going to have to do a budget amendment for the next quarter because we have seven applications coming. We weren't anticipating this when the original budget was set earlier. Now, all of a sudden, we have this coming up. And those are mandated. It's not like you can say, no, we're not going to pay that, and then you have to stack. But then it's to regroup and look at that budget and say, do we have any other? Because you heard the presentation earlier, which you don't have any fund balance left to carry over. In prior years, you maybe had a little bit of wiggle room to kind of say, okay, we can handle this because we'll take from our, you know, previous fund balance that's not there. So then you just really need to look to say, how do we address this? And we have to do a budget amendment, and that might need going for the cost of other programs, or, you know, coming up with ways to address it instead of waiting, you know, and just looking at what the ramifications are, you know, and just looking at what the ramifications are, you know, after the fact. It's really trying to get on top of it as quickly as you can.
I wish we would have had this information before we got our referendum. I think we would have made a big difference. I mean, we're, we're in trouble, I hate to say it. And I just want to make very clear that, that being, as long as I've been on this board, this board has been very financial fiscal as far as it comes to bulk spending and will do it. But when you have state mandated programs that you have to pay for out of your own fund that you don't get state funding in, it's very tough to keep a budget.
And I think part of it too, and I alluded to it in an earlier slide, when you look at that general fund and you look at where your funding sources come. And, you know, your local levy, which was just shy of $3 million for the general fund, really was like 2% of the total revenues that come in. So you are so largely relying on federal and state funding, which you don't have a lot of control over that. And so you have to start looking at what other sources and, you know, unfortunately, you know, with that, with where you're sitting, you just don't have the, the unassigned, those carryover balances. You have it in the past. And so. Is there any other, you know, questions? I, I knew this would be kind of a heavy conversation. There were some, when we come in to do an audit, we were required to look at, because the district expends more than $750,000 in federal funds, that's going up to $1 million. You do spend more of that in federal funds, primarily title, special ed, in your lunch program, your food service program, your top three. We're required to do what calls single audit and that's under uniform guidance or federal. And we'd have some legal compliance just where we're required to do it. So there were seven findings. A lot of these might look familiar to you in the past. So you did have a material weakness over the proposed audit entries. You know, that entails along with finding number five or finding of 2025-5 with UFRS coding. Part of the significant material adjustments that we had to do when we came in to do the audit, a lot of it comes back to coding. And I sat last year at this point and talked about it. And I know the district had, had AR come in and even really working on it. That was on the tail end of fiscal '24. So really we're seeing some of that still in fiscal '25. Hopefully now in '26, you've got all of that coding because that is so critical. You know, anytime you're looking at funding sources and looking at where is the district at for a budget purpose? If coding isn't, if it's not in the right bucket, it's really hard to determine because putting it in the right bucket, again, with either a fin code or a program code, is going to generate whether you've got some federal or state coming back or is it not mandated? So, you know, you still did have some material proposed audit entries. The two, the other two significant deficiencies because of the size of the district, those will be there and most districts are seeing that. Lack of segregation of duties, unfortunately, your business office doesn't have 90 people that we'd like to see each having their own duties. So you have a lack of segregation of duties. And then we're required to disclose that we associate the financial statements and so that's a required finding. Minnesota legal compliance, we saw bits and quotes. In the actual report itself, bidding at $175,000 or more with bidding, you have to go out publicly bid, that's all documented. The $25,000 to the 175, the district is required to quote it. You can, and again, under state statutes, I know there's some additional federal coming, but under state statutes, with the bids or with the quotes, if it's 25 to 175,000, you're supposed to keep those on file for at least one year. You can do verbal quotes. So during our audit, we had requested for several copies and two out of the quotes, the district wasn't able to support the, provide the documentation of the supporting quote process they used. So in other words, if somebody calls up and doesn't quote, write it down, they need to document who they called, all they've done it, or if they've gone through the state bidding process, keep, or state quoting process and keep documentation. We've talked to Alex, a lot of times this happens when you've got staff in the district doing some things like that and then just making sure that the business office is getting that documentation. Public purpose, there was a, a finding regarding, the district has vending machine money, vending machine contracts that are under contract that the district has and a reminder that the dispersments that come under that vending machine dollars have to meet public purpose and be documented as such. So in the report, there was some documentation that the district wasn't able to support the public purpose behind some of those vending machine. And then the final one was under the single audit. You did receive, the district did receive a qualified report, which means except for this one issue, you were in compliance with the federal standards. This one issue with PARs is regarding payroll activity reporting system or client and accounters. When we come into a single audit, we go through and test different programs. We're not looking at 100% of your program. So in this particular case, based on risk assessment and the amount of funding received, we looked at title and your food service. And within the title program, federal standards require that you have time and effort. So in other words, that employees who are partially funded with federal and state have to keep track of records. I did have some conversations with Kerry that now has been implemented. The state came in and also had mentioned that. So the district is currently working on, with the state, on a corrective action plan to get those documentation in place. And my understanding is now in place for that budget process. So those were the findings the state will require when this gets submitted to MDE and the state auditor before the end of the month, a corrective action plan. And so Alex is, is familiar with that in the past, so we made a request a copy of that before December 31st.
So would you say that all of this list really, I mean, none of them are okayed by me? The lack of segregation of duties is, again, common with larger districts. Not saying again that you just let that go, but everything else on this list should not be on this list.
Right. And I think, you know, if you look at UFRS coding, which kind of tails on to that material weakness with the proposed audit entry, those to me would be the top, from the financial aspect, would be the top two for the district to really address. And I know now, you know, later in, if you remember, I think it was in February, March, equally, we had AR come in and do some training with administrative staff. So hopefully that'll be, those, those two should not, should, should, none of them should be on there, but finding two and finding three are going to be pretty standard just because of the size of the district and your finance, the financing and the resources of your staff. But the rest of them, and other than finding one and finding five, those really involve getting the cooperation of everybody who codes in this district. From the, you know, if it's a building, you know, administrative assistant to a program person, they all should be very well, have the background to be able to code those where they should go. That would take care of the material from all of those entries and then monitoring budgets. A lot of two of those proposed audit entries occur when, so something might get coded to a spot and then at the end periodically, whether it's a title program or special ed or some of the, you know, reconciling those on a timely basis, whether it's monthly or quarterly to that, making sure all of those are clean. A lot of that could clean up those sort of entries too.
And I, and I know just from conversation over, you know, our meetings or interactions that there has been training or steps to improve with those coding. I mean, we, we've heard that often in the last year. So I haven't been taking steps, I know that we have, but is there further? Clearly there is. I think it's disappointing to see repeat on here and certainly disappointing to hear that there's something that has to have a corrective action plan. I mean, I think that is something that we as a board have to acknowledge and hold people accountable for because that, that's part of our responsibility.
And, and the corrective action plan is, you know, would be required regardless for whatever finding that is upon there. But generally the MDE, Minnesota Department of Education, in the past, when you had those, even last year when you saw those first three are repeated this year, MDE did sustain that, which means that they recognize and understand the resources for smaller school districts, but they still say, what oversight are you doing over that? You know, the assistance with the financial reports is very common, you know, most of the audit firms are assisting with that. The lack of segregation, segregation of duties, it's things like addressing to say, it's not practical to hire 20 more people in your finance department, but setting together a finance committee or budget meetings regularly to oversee it. Bring in your program or your other administrators who are in charge of other programs to work with the finance department to make sure everything, yep, that's, we agree, you know, for instance, the district has to submit to MEGs, to do brought downs or specifically with special ed, they're doing it to serve. So there's some of these reconciliation that those program administrators do that can be matched up to UFRS timely, all of those things instead of being done just at the end of the year. Being done routinely, quarterly, you know, might, might alleviate a lot of that too. At one point, I don't know where, if you remember, the state had wanted like material audit entries, that first one, they had said, well, have me a second person sign off on your journal entries. You know, that, that on paper looks good, but is it practical when somebody's doing it in depth? That could very well be the case if Alex is doing a, a journal entry and is proposing over title. Obviously you'd want the title person to sign off and approving that journal entry and things. So that makes sense, but not overall of them. I, I'd say with, you know, the due diligence working on those, you know, you, finding two and three will be there because of the, you know, in subsequent years. And the rest of them, I think the progress is being made in the right direction to making steps to move there. Just wasn't completely done before FY '25 ended.
I think in defense of our finance department and Alex, I think they do a really good job. And from I see from up here, I don't see any major red flags being up, that these are things that are procedural items that I think that, the comments I have in the department that they're willing to resort to.
Yeah. I, I think the finding though for material weakness, so when we look at those control deficiency, I think it's important to note that there's different levels. So significant deficiency means it's just significant from an audit perspective that we talked to the board about. It's significant in that way. The material weakness is that higher level that says if, if it wasn't, if it hadn't been for some auditing questions and proposed entries, there may have been some material adjustments that should have been done. When it gets to that level and we're proposing that sort of thing, audit cannot be part of our internal control system. You know, that needs to be in place. When we come in and audit, you know, it's just, we're testing and doing the thing. So when some of those entries become material, and again, a lot of that comes through because of UFRS coding and the amount of time it takes at the end of the year to, to recode or reclassify, get those things in place is sometimes insurmountable. And that's also during the time when the district business manager is trying to pull together the budget for the next year and things like that. So there is, you know, it is material to the point that I, the resources and the, the coding and watching that is really important for the district to acknowledge, but not just put it all in the business office. It's something that can be supported up from programming administrators and the board itself, the board's good idea.
That's what I was going to propose, that maybe we have like a workbook that can somehow make sure we have tasks assigned in a way where we can reduce that, that risk. And the other thing is my observation with a material weakness in the number of audit entries, right? Like we really have to manage our budget. We have $20,000 in unscripted general fund. If we don't have accurate interim financial information, our monitoring our budget is not going to be as effective as it could be and we run the risk of more surprises that you're in.
And I, I don't think any administrator would disagree, but a great, great effort has been made.
Oh, I'm sure.
Since going back in the last, a year ago.
Yeah. And I understand it, but if there's anything we can do like process wise to help alleviate the burden and reduce the risk, I don't know what that would be, but.
I think a lot of it is communication. You know, I think talking when we're on site on the audit, in some ways I think, you know, Alex says that business manager, it's important of all the audit inquiries, right? And a lot of it is like, well, I don't know, you know, I'll have to find that out from maybe somebody else in the district who's in charge of that program. And so it really does kind of, it's a team thing that, you know, he can only do his job based on the information provided to him. So it's really that whole communication piece. And then the programming and administration on the other side is equally just as interested to know, hey, how are we doing on this? Are we over or under budget? And so it's a team approach because there's no way the business office can just do it without having good coding, UFRS coding and coming through. And so I know, you know, talking the district had really after last year, that's the disadvantage of the audits are, it takes so long to get these done and you're six months into the new year. And so last year when some of this was brought up and the district was reacting to the findings from last year, it was in January, February, March when they started implementing it. So those aren't going to take the place again in the FY '25 audit. So moving in the right direction for those fund balance isn't moving in the wrong direction.
Bonnie, if I could just add, our last two weeks of meetings, we've really taken the team approach with each of the department heads and the principals. And so now we are having that communication piece and, and there's ownership with a team of people instead of just having it, you know, no oversight or only oversight by one person.
But that's exactly, those are the appropriate measures that the district can take in order to move and then keep, keep out of the escalating situation. Is there any other, you know, there's so much information in there, I just wanted to kind of highlight and, you know, eight pages in, you know, 12, 12 or 15 slides. There are two, is, our other, two other communications says auditors are required to get to the board. So in your package, you should have, have two other things besides the annual report. There's a management letter, which are additional items, findings, recommendations for policies and procedures. A lot of those, again, excuse me, you may see repeated for the past year. And so the district should really carefully go through those, address those, highlight, put resources into taking care of those that, and a lot of them we've already talked about, the findings into there, this, the, the food service receivables. And then there's a stapled correspondence to those in charge of governance, which is a communication from us as auditors to you as the board indicating if we had a significant difficulties during, during, during the audit or if there were changes to any accounting principles. And it's a pretty standard letter on that one. Any questions on the management letter? I'm not going to go through the detail. A lot of the findings we've already talked about, but that's one to be appropriately addressed in the board and administrator, in an administrative meeting to see how you can address some of those recommendations.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you, Bonnie. Thanks for the good news.
Yeah, I just want to say that both Jeff and Bonnie were very hard to personally master year after year, so thank you personally.
Well, I sometimes figure when I'm sending Alex an email at, you know, a time or anything like that, I'm thinking, oh, I'm sure this is my auditor's, sometimes it's a bad day month, the whole thing about that. I do appreciate the Alex's office and everybody in there and the other programs, they've been, you know, for the most part, very responsive when we, you know, asking information and things, so I appreciate that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
With that, Lamook, I apply for administrative report. Records again.
I'll just add, this past weekend, I think an opportunity was spent in the cities and, you know, delegate to the NSBA delegate assembly, and there were some really good resolutions that were debated, 36 of them, but two sorts, resolutions that fall into two categories really were interesting. And one of them was a proposed amendment to the Minnesota constitution to replace an outdated formula on how to distribute funds from the permanent school trust fund. And so currently they don't distribute interest and dividends and they were looking at doing something different. So that resolution did pass, so hopefully our government relations team from NSBA can convince the legislature to move forward with that. And then there were other debates around PSCO. And one of them that was difficult, that it did pass, 48 to 60, but the way the process worked, I understand why, was to put more authority in the, in the hands of the school district in terms of students that would be eligible. That did not pass, but there was another one that did pass and there were many different pieces of that, but one was hopefully proposing reduced funding for PSCO students. I don't know where that will go in the legislature. And then there was a third one that had to do with the study group. And interestingly, we learned that there has been a study group in place, the Minnesota P20 Educational partnership. It's been, it was created in 2009, so we're still waiting for the reports on that one. But PSCO and this whole distribution of the permanent school trust fund were two. But PSEO and this whole distribution of the permanent school trust fund were two that, two topics that were debated. So, and from there, you know, NSBA will put together their legislative platform and get it out to all of our districts. So it was a great experience, that's for sure.
Thank you. Anything else? Hearing none, we'll go to the student director, Sam.
All right, well, I have two things. First, I have my recent report for you today, Mr. Chair. And secondly is, I've got to be going. I've got to, I've got to get to my job. Yeah. I know.
Hurry up, get out of here.
Yeah, so you guys have a nice night. And if I don't see any, you guys have a nice...
You too.
Thank you, Sam.
If that one's not a read, I'll turn it over to Superintendent Richard, Administration, Administrators and Staff.
You don't have any administrative presenting here, other than Mrs. McDonald presenting on, later in the admin business. So would you like to do that now, Mr. Chair, or would you like to do that down?
Paul, are there any ready reports? Hearing none, then how would you want to go?
So Carrie's gonna report on the Comprehensive Achievement and Civic Readiness Report, and she's got that up and ready. If you'd like her to go now, and we would just have to take the action later in the meeting, however you'd like to do it. Okay, Mrs. McDonald, you're right ahead there, if you're ready.
It's only going to be 30 minutes, I promise. Hello. Okay, just quickly, wanted to give a few Career Academy updates. You have a Career Academy newsletter on, by your seat there. Our new course, EMR, is going very well. Our personal finance is going very well. You saw in the newspaper, I believe yesterday, there was a nice article about our entrepreneurship program. So that was kind of exciting that that was highlighted. Again, that's an opportunity for our kids here to get some experience in the business world.
Carrie, I just got a quick question. When you talk about the nursing, the EMR, and the CPR, did you say that that is being taught by somebody from the college or...
Yes, yes.
From Minnesota North?
Yep, yep. We don't have any staff here that are licensed to teach the courses, so we have a college professor that's coming to teach it here, and it's through a grant through the IRRB where they're offering this opportunity.
Is the same, is it that just one person doing all of it?
One person first semester is doing the EMR CPR, and then second semester we'll have a different faculty here to do the CNA. And the CNA course, we could, if we could afford it, we could offer three sections of it. It's capped at 10. So we unfortunately had to tell five students that they're on a waiting list for next year now because we can't take any more than 10 students in the course. But it's definitely a need in the community for sure. AJ and I are still attending our fellowship program. We spent a day at the Capitol, very interesting to find a real, real process and how things work down there. So we're, we're very much enjoying that. Just to review, I know all of the buildings have come to you and talked about our district priorities, still working for our literacy framework, the math standards, also working on our data and using data to make our decisions, mental health stuff, the new teacher eval plan, our collaborative link teams, we talked about the district leadership team at Wynn Time and then the personal learning plan. So a lot of work is being done. Our staff have been really good about embracing these priorities and working through them. I mean, again, you know, in education, we're always asking people to do more, and for the most part, they're willing to do everything that they have, so. The main reason that I'm here today is to talk about the Comprehensive Achievement and Civic Readiness Report. So I'm just going to give you a little bit of background, like these are state requirements. So the state requires that the district submits their annual report in, through May, and that report is due on the 15th of December. So I'm presenting this information to you, and then we'll submit it to the state upon your approval. We're required to hold an annual public meeting to talk about our goals. That's what this meeting is for. And then the school board has to publish a report on the website, pending your approval. I have an email scheduled to go out to Joel Anderson tomorrow to get it on the school website. So this link does sound on there. Just a little bit more background information on this. Districts are required to periodically survey students, families, and community members about their connection to a level of satisfaction with the school, and these results are supposed to be used in our report. So, you know, we did a strategic plan in October of 2020. We do other sorts of things to get feedback from our community. I believe next week, we may be talking a little bit about the possibility of doing another strategic plan because it's been five years now. So I think that we're on track with this requirement as well. So I'm just going to quickly go through these highlights of the report, and you all have a copy. If you have any other questions after this, please feel free to get ahold of me. But this report that I'm giving you is based on last year's results. So it's, it's kind of confusing because in December of this year, I'm presenting last year's results and what we did to support these goals. Okay, so these are just some highlights. In "All Students Are Ready for School," that's based off of our early childhood program and the Ready Cycle testing that they do. You can see the goals that we set and then the results. So we met five of the six benchmarks, had a couple that we had missed, and we'll focus on those when I say next year, that means this year. And then some of the things that they did to, to incorporate these goals would be to implement SCL supports, REDACT training, and looking at data today.
Okay, do I have a question on that?
Yeah.
So I don't know if it was the last board meeting or the board meeting before that, you brought us test scores. Is that the same, excuse me, the same timeframe as this? So are you saying, you know, it was last year or in December, you're bringing us fall or spring of 2025? Is that the, I guess my question is, is how does, how is it that looking at literacy, 94% met, but when we think back to those test scores that you recently showed us, those numbers don't match this at all? So what is the difference?
What events tests that we're taking last year? I believe what we brought to you this fall was a combination of like last year's MCA scores and FastBridge data, but also our fall FastBridge data, I think we talked with you about.
So this is not apples to apples, everything's...
Right, right. And this is, this is specifically an early childhood test, so it's different than the FastBridge and the other stuff.
Okay, thank you.
And, and again, like this report has specific goals we have to address. We don't have, literacy isn't on here, that's, we have to do a separate literacy plan. We don't have math on here. So I think in the fall, we kind of did a big data overview. This is more specific to the goals that we have to report on for this report. So now, the second goal that we have to report on is all racial and economic achievement gaps between students are closed. Last year, we focused on Native American, American Indian students. We did not meet our goal, but I believe we were above the state average. And again, the important part for me is when we are putting, looking at these goals, the action plan is what I'm most concerned about. Like, you know, are we going to hit the target? That would be great, but the work is the meaningful piece of this. What are we doing to connect with our American Indian students so they feel supported and they can do better on their reading and math scores? So those are some of the things that were highlighted in the information that we received from the different schools. These are the things that, that we worked through last year to help support them. All students will graduate from high school. Last year, the high school chose to do 100% graduation goal, which is a very lofty goal. And an interesting part of this is the state is always a year back from, we're setting a goal for, let's just say, last year, we were setting last year's goal, but we didn't get even the year before's information. We're always one year behind, so that's a little bit difficult. But again, to me, the goal isn't what's important, it's what strategies are we using to help achieve the goals? So that's listed for "All Students Will Graduate." The next two are kind of close to my heart because they have a lot to do with the Career Academy. And truly, where I think that education is kind of moving for ninth through 12th grade for future to be, to make our students able to be productive citizens, is that we need to be really career and college focused and getting them those skills that they need to be successful right out of high school. So this goal of "All Students Are Ready for Career in College," we really looked at Minnesota's College and Career Readiness Competencies. So you have the standards, right? We have to, Minnesota Department of Ed gives us all the standards. Those are in math and science and social studies and other things, but then they also have career and college readiness competencies. And so we had our high school staff really try to focus on these last year when we were looking at professional development, and what kinds of employability skills and mindsets and social awareness and career development and transitional knowledge are we presenting to kids and are they experiencing in our classrooms? So we did a lot of work on this, and I'm excited about that. We're continuing that work this year. And then preparing our students to be lifelong learners. Again, the Minnesota, the Department of Ed requires that we have personal learning plans for students, and we are really working hard to make those more meaningful. My hope is either by the end of the year or in the fall, as a parent, you will have access to your child's personal learning plan through Power School, where you can see all the experiences they've had in ninth, 10th, 11th, and 12th grade. There'll be information on careers, there'll be information on scholarships. It's all going to be kind of tied together in this plan that parents can access as well. So I'm excited about that. And then we've already set our goals for this year. I am not going to take the time to go over this year's goals again. I know we've talked about those when the other schools have come here. And then the schools are each working on their action plans. So we met, I think, a week ago as a district leadership team, and schools had, each school broke out into their team, and they were working on their action plans for this year's goals. So next year, in December, again, I'll be presenting on that. Any questions?
Carrie, I do. Personal learning plans. What happens to those plans, say, in, when a student reaches 11th grade? If they no longer are sitting in our seats, do those plans continue? Who's responsible? Do parents have access?
So if they are still our student, for example, a PSEO student, yes, our, our, the district is still responsible for meeting that requirement of those personal, those learning plans. The communication would be done probably mostly through the counselors because, you know, they wouldn't have, for the students that are here, we want all teachers to be a part of those learning plans and those career experience and all of the things. For a student that's full-time PSEO, their connection would be limited to probably their counselor. But then parents, again, can access that information. It's going to be, we're going to, the way we're going to set it up is that's how they're going to be able to apply through colleges, request transcripts, letters of recommendation, apply for scholarships. I mean, it's going to be a one-stop shop. And what I hope is that when we start in ninth grade with these, and we have a college and careers class in ninth grade, that's where we'll start building the plan and the system, that it will build a stronger connection for parents and kids to our school. Because instead of just being one of, you know, 800 kids here, now they've got a personal connection with the plan, and they can see all of the work that, that is going on. I mean, otherwise, you're having to have, reach out and have conversations or email, all of those kinds of things.
But it is another service we're going to have to provide.
Yep.
Potentially about funding.
Yep. Any other questions?
They doing a habit house again this year?
Yes, they are.
In Yevi?
Yep, it's actually right next door to the last one.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Very good, thank you. You were done. Will be glad to see us. Most of you can prove the agenda. Well, for, for Director Culture, for Vice Director Mike.
One question for Mr. Al.
Yes.
Superintendent Alers.
Yes, sir.
You know, we have a couple of spring, or yeah, spring coaches leaving. When do we put, when do we go all the way now and try to find somebody?
Yes. Yeah, no, we'll post, we'll post, yeah. I don't know if you've already posted or not, but probably after you take this action, we're going to want to do a post. If, if it's necessary to fill, I mean, I think we're, if we evaluate all that, that's, we're doing a booster grade and we're changing. But yes, if they're necessary to fill, then it's something that'd be our obligation, then yes, we absolutely.
And I think I asked this a long time ago, and I don't remember, so I'm going to have to ask again. You know, looking at the, the dates of most of these, or some of them, everything is already, you know, back in November, even prior to our last school board meeting. So everything, even though we're voting on and accepting everything or approving everything today, it's already said and done, like a month ago. Why, why is that?
I think it's just the timing of when these things occur and need to fill this. I don't know if that better is explanation. Alex, you helped me out there. I mean, I would, what are your thoughts? When you take, when you take these resignations to make command, if it's at the end of the season or whatever it might be. So like the, give me an example, one, help me with one here.
So like, let's just take that first one. Let's just take a very personal, because it has effective November 14. Again, that, our last meeting was the 19th.
I don't, I don't know, like with, with Mr. Rec, I don't know. We might have received the letter.
Sure.
And it was predated, you know, I haven't done it at the end of the season.
And I guess I'm more interested in about like the postings that we're approving because like the one on the, the very person on the second page is effective November 12th, the posting, so that it's already been posted. If we've already, if, you know, per this, November 12th, but we're not approving it now until December 10th. I guess my, I just don't understand how, why do we even have to approve it? It was already done. I mean, isn't it true to be the other way around?
You know what? Let me, let me try to give you a good little thought out answer on that. And I'm probably going to have to ask you a little bit, but I know a lot of these are just their timing when they come.
Sure.
You know, we'll miss a board meeting, we'll miss the agenda when it goes out, and I think we could, we could do addendums.
No, I'm not trying to cause more work or anything.
Oh, no, but...
I just, I find it strange that we're approving something in December that's already been done in November.
Yeah, I understand, I understand.
When it comes to the postings. Not necessarily the resignations, I get that, but the postings, if we're putting jobs out there, we should have, we should have approved them before these are posted, right?
I, I understand, yep, yep.
Same thing, she knew when we hired a coach. It is the 24th of November. I'm sure there's a person that's been working with some of them.
Oh, yes.
Been working with them.
Yes, yeah, yeah. And I, and so I think in some of those instances, we'd have to make a decision, like if there is a leg there, then do we, I mean, these people have done the background check, and they've done the paperwork, and they've done the, you know, things to be an employee, so they're, so we met our requirements, but do we wait for them to start? You know, if we get something late and hired, are we going to wait a month into the season for it to start for the board to take action, or do we...
The only concern about it is if the board member has a question on the hiring. You've already basically hired them, and he hasn't come to the board.
Well, but none of it is official until you take action.
They're down there working with the kid right now.
Well, but, but, but I mean, it's no different than when we make an offer to somebody, right? And they're making plans, and they're going on Facebook, and they got a job they're having, all that. I always caution them to say, oh, this is pending board approval. And I suppose we might have to walk back from some of these positions if you did not want one of these people to have...
That's intentional, I'm not going to have it.
When you put pending board approval, is it the next reading? Let me, you give them a date?
But my concern is from a liability standpoint. I mean, yes, background checks and all that, but what happens if somebody is on a bus with somebody and they're...
but what happens if somebody is on a bus with somebody and there's an injury or something, and they really haven't been hired by the board?
You probably shouldn't be on a bus.
It, I mean, I, I will, I'll get you a better answer on some of the reasoning for it, but I know a lot of it is just timing, and, you know, some, some things were required to post, you know, within a certain time, once we get notification that we have a vacancy, um, that happens also, especially with the asking positions, um, but I'll, I'll get you a much more intricate answer than stumbling through it here tonight.
And I'm not as concerned, like, there's one here, I think Director Vardhi brought up, that is already, we're just getting it posted, I think that one is already filled, maybe, I'm not as concerned if it's a transfer between buildings, to me, that's more of a managerial collective bargaining, but when it's a hire, that's, that's a concern.
A little bit of business is already in our system.
Don't worry, that, that.
Our custodian, they're basically already in the system, so there is movement, a link into the high school backboard, so again, I don't see any problem with that, I just, if we're hiring an athletic coach, and he's already been here a month, and the number five, this is appropriate, that's right.
Sure, sure. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I think we did the patterns, motion carried.
Can I ask, are all these replacements or any of these new positions, or these just filling vacant, I mean, like, I guess I'm looking to see if it adds to our budget.
These, none of these are new positions, these are all related to transfers from within, or movement, or someone has resigned, or, um, yes, and that, like, that's another piece, and we took some of these resignations probably two meetings ago, um, also, I mean, to these folks, and it's, yes, it is a way to catch up with them.
Okay, motion carried, you went through all this stuff already, so the motion to approve the consent agenda. Support by Director Kim, supported by Director Sarah, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign. Motion carried. Move by Agent Administrative Business, Sir Alex.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome.
I don't know, is a motion to approve the fiscal year 2025 audit financial report.
Hold on. Your board. Support by Director Folter, supported by Director Egan, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign. Motion carried.
Thank you. I don't see, is a motion to approve the comprehensive achievement and civic readiness report.
Support. Support by Director Kim, supported by Director Jeff, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign. Motion carried, thank you.
I don't see, is a motion to hold a working session of the school board on December seventeenth, two thousand twenty-five at nine o'clock AM, and to cancel the optional regular school board meeting to be held on December seventeenth, two thousand twenty-five at three thirty PM.
Hold on. Your board. Support by Director Folter, supported by Director Egan, any further discussion?
That will be held here.
Yes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign. Motion carried, thank you. What's that? Discussion item?
I mean, just, I just made a comment on the last, on the last motion that you made again, I, I know I sent you an email over the weekend, maybe it was even last week, if you have items that you'd like to include in that working session, somebody have done that, um, just please let me know, we'll most likely have it all by the end of the day of Thursday or Friday morning, the agenda, not that we couldn't add to that again, if, but I think just being transparent, getting the topics out there ahead of time is important, so if you've got something, please let me know, and again, I have, if you've shared something with me already, I put that on the list, so.
With that, I'll make a comment that we're, during this meeting, until six o'clock, when the truth of taxation meeting will be conducted here. So, thought objection?
Motion.
Meeting's adjourned, it's five thirty-seven. Thank you, we'll see you shortly.